All right. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight and coming up to the 7th floor with us. It is, the air conditioner is strong, and we've got something on here about air conditioners. All right, we'll go through the agenda, get questions answered for next week to start the meeting. Ms. Caroline, Caroline, do you want to go first? Caroline has something for us.
I was asked to do some research on availability for funding for works on Sykes Cemetery. The Alabama Historical Commission has a 2023 Historic Sites Grant application. This is due in June. The maximum amount that they will give is $75,000. I don't believe they've come close to that before because typically requests weigh out pace what their budget is, but the city's been very successful in obtaining that every time we've asked before. The grants are awarded to public or nonprofit entities who own and operate historic sites in Alabama. It's, the cemetery is eligible for the National Register, so it does meet that criteria. The cemetery is already on the Alabama Cemetery Register. And projects that would be covered by this grant include cleaning, repairing grave markers, repairing fences, removing vegetation. They also will cover interpretive signage or any sort of a public outreach, whether it's research that goes onto a website, research that goes into publication or about the people that are in front there. All of that is possible. There is also possibly, and I don't have a response back on this one, because there is a, at least one member in that cemetery who is part of the Gahr party. If they have a separate source of funding, then we might be able to approach for that. The grants last for two years, so if we receive them, we have two years to do the work. And it certainly is one, I had already reached out to the state about this as a project, so I've talked to people at the state, so they're saying this is where we are with this cemetery. This is what we know about it. They were very receptive to the project so far. It is a non-match grant, which is sort of unheard of in my hood, which means there is no financial match or space there. And it is also possible, if council decides that they, they might go forward with Sykes Cemetery, but they're concerned about the timeline on this because we've got a month to address it. I certainly can reach out to the state saying, you know, city intent is to go ahead. If for some reason they are not successful, do we have the ability to move this to another project? Then I can propose a secondary project as well. I have one that I can oversee.
I guess my first question is, we don't actually own that, or we don't think we do. We don't, we don't have anyone's.
Yeah, there's not a data record.
Okay, so can we even apply?
Well, I think that's why I could apply and sort of say, if council thinks they're going to look into that, I can say this is the intent, but it would be at some point around the middle of this grant. It's probably take a year or so to go through that process. If the commission says, okay, that's a hard line in terms of what we can or can't fund, then it would be, here is a secondary grant, you know, project that we would like funded. I'd only be applying for one project because they get so many more requests than they have funding for. I'm not going to apply for two because I think it's a given. I would only get one investment, right?
Okay, I would, and Alan and I talked today, I think, you know, the Garth Cemetery, I don't know if that was your second one or not, but.
My understanding was we did not own that.
We don't own that one either, so I mean, on both of those, you know, the Garth Cemetery has, has the grave with one of the founders of Decatur. And I think, and I'm in favor of doing what we need to do to clean up and.
Someone, there's a group already doing.
Yeah, they are, but the Sykes Cemetery and the Garth Cemetery needs, the stones need to be rebuilt. Almost all of them, there's one that's okay, but I'm, I'm in favor of us doing that no matter what. I'm definitely in favor of applying for a grant, but that's what I'm looking for. I just don't know if we can apply for those without having the property.
Also, do we have any idea if $75,000 will cover?
No, and I don't think we would get the full $75,000. My understanding is that they get more requests than they can budget for, but I think we'd be successful in getting a portion of that. Then it comes down to, if we're going to grant at that point, what is the grant amount? What can we budget, you know, with that? Because when you, when you, and they know that you don't know for sure when we start one of these, exactly what, how the final cost will lay out. So you sort of have a hierarchy of, this is the first step we would like to do. If we have additional funding, we can move to stage two, you know, you sort of stage it out. So that's really common in these applications that in and of itself isn't something that's going to.
But then there's continued maintenance?
No, that is a separate issue, yes.
But Sykes Cemetery is a very visible cemetery. It's right there, it's next to Seville, and I would think we would want that well maintained anyways.
Garth should be visible.
Yeah, Kennedy.
I would agree on both of them. Now, of course, there would definitely be processes we'd have to go through. Herman, you know, he's dealt with both of those things. We've got some initial conversations about the site, so I mean, it's definitely, it's going to be a process.
But I'm, I think we should apply if you have a second option that we do on the property board, if they'll let us use it for that, I'm in favor of that a lot of the time.
So we would have to own the property to be able to make application for a grant?
So the way it's phrased, and this is where sometimes the questions I ask them, they aren't necessarily prepared to answer. If it's for buildings, yes, because obviously you can't do work on a building if you don't own it. For cemeteries, there are lots of municipalities that will sometimes take care of essentially abandoned cemeteries, but might not have the deed. For educational programming, you don't have to own something to do educational programming. So I certainly could phrase it that, you know, we're going to do research on the cemetery, research on the inhabitants. That would be considered an educational program if we could put that on a website or have a sort of scan, Q Pro, that takes it somewhere, which would allow us to look at the history of the cemetery while waiting sort of for any next steps to occur. We have received back-to-back AHC grants for the Princess and for the Carnegie of Four, so it's not uncommon to come back in another year and ask for additional money to continue a project. So it's something where we can even say, okay, we're going to start on the historic part of it. And if we, in terms of the interpretation, and if the city acquires deed at some point in that process, the following year will come back and ask for funding to, to address the maintenance of it. Particularly things like grave markers, which really need a fairly sophisticated crew. I've already been in touch with the state about who typically does that work, that meets the right standards and make sure that things go back the way they need to.
And Herman, can we, I know y'all are working on the work of Sykes, but also is, if we can take control of the Garth Cemetery as well?
We'll try to refresh, revitalize that process.
All right, any other questions, Caroline? All right, next, approval of minutes. May 9th, 2022, 5:00 p.m., work session. May 16th, 2022, 9:30 a.m., work session. May 16th, 2022, 10:00 a.m., council meeting, any questions? All right, set public hearings, resolution 22-120, authorize abatement of unsafe conditions at 1308 15th Avenue Southeast. Is that like a house?
I'm in favor of it, yeah.
All right, it's a house demolition, I believe.
It is, yeah.
All right, we're setting the public hearing for July 5th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Y'all have questions, I'm not here to address them. All right, appeals, resolution number 22-121, approve Historic Preservation Commission's decision to reject courtyard construction at 411 Walnut Street Northeast. This is Mr. Kennedy that we had a couple of months ago, and he has appealed the HBC's decision to reject the latest COA.
Here we only talk a little bit about it, but we're trying to answer.
Yeah, any, any questions or discussion? Okay, they did reject this.
And there's very little change in the application, but he's back. So here it'll be June 6th.
Yep, any questions? Public hearings, ordinance 22-4513, approve rezoning request 139222 by Erica Powell for .19 acres, more or less. He rezoned from B1 Local Shopping District to B2 General Business District, located at 511 19th Avenue Southeast. Public hearing was set May 2nd, 2022.
I guess this one was not recommended for approval, but plenty of questions.
All right, any questions?
What was the intended use?
They stated they are in real, that's what they wanted to do in that, and that's not allowable in the B1 district.
And y'all heard from residents in that area?
Not really. There wasn't a whole lot of neighbors that came out for, or is this one? It's kind of a quiet one.
So it's strictly based on the fact that it's a wrong map, the proper zoning?
And kind of past precedent of how the planning commission has viewed this specific type of request. A lot of times it's, it's looking at, you know, it's right next to a bunch of residential, and the question on these is always the other things that are allowed in a B2 zoning and whether that's in line with the character of the neighborhood surrounding it. And I think a lot of this comes down to, you know, the B1, B2 alcohol laws is why we're seeing a lot of these.
And this was unanimous?
It was eight to one.
Do you, I guess, if you had on this one specifically, I know it's hard to know what they're thinking, but in your opinion, if it was, if there was a separation of, you know, kind of what it could be, and if the intended, intended use that they've stated was actually what it's going to be, and that's all it could be, would they have been in favor? Or what would your thoughts on that be? I just hate making a decision based on what something might happen.
Well, in a, in a B1, you know, you can, you can have, but it's, it's hard to say exactly what they were, what, you know. But like I said, ultimately, that's what it comes down to is just that, you know, that B2 is the broadest category of commercial zoning and allows any kind of commercial endeavor. One of the things that always get brought up are car lights and how that's not really, you know, a neighborhood commercial use. That's ultimately what this comes down to.
But a restaurant, I think.
A restaurant might be.
A strip club might not be.
Strip club might not. And then, you know, and then the alcohol laws and how they differ between B1 and B2, what's allowed, you know, you can have, you know, it's just more limited.
There was some discussion with the plan about looking at pulling the alcohol part out. Where, where did that go?
Where we're standing on that right now is based on the conversations with the planning commission and went back and had more, got more input from the steering committee that was working on module two for us. The direction we're going to be looking at in the rewrite is to, you know, our alcohol is, it's very nuanced is a good way to put it. It, it varies wildly from district to district, you know. We've got on-premise, off-premise, it's limited to only beer and wine in some, it's full alcohol sales in others. And so the better way we think to do that is to just allow alcohol sales in commercial districts and not break it down by, you know, full alcohol or beer and wine. And just, if you can sell alcohol, you're allowed to sell alcohol in commercial districts. Then what you do is you, then your uses determine, you know, how you, you know, what is allowed in each district and what would be allowed those sales. So like in a neighborhood district, you, instead of making a restaurant just a permitted use, you make it a special exception use where they have to go to BOZA. And if BOZA gives them the approval for that use, then they would be allowed the alcohol sales. But what that does is that just kind of puts a layer, a kind of checks and balances layer in there so that, because when BOZA's weighing these cases, they will weigh them knowing that what they are granting the use permission to carries with it the alcohol sales. And we think that's a better way to go about it, and that's the direction that we've kind of been given from the planning commission, what they would like to say.
I guess my question is, how did she get to the point, she or whoever made the application here, get to the point where, if you explain that, that the B2 zoning was what was needed, how did she get to the point where she said, okay, I'm going to go to a different zoning plane or apply for a different zoning? What brought that on?
Just the use and the wanting to sell the alcohol and it only, her use and specifically what she was wanting to accomplish with her business could only be allowed in the B2, not the B1, so it requires the zoning change?
No, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's what I'm asking. If you, if it was explained to her that this is all, what you want to do is only allowable in B2, that was explained?
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out how there was a leap made from that to, okay, well, even though it's only allowed in B2, what I want to do, I'm going to leap to, and do it and try to do it in B1. I mean, what, did you have a discussion with her or what brought that?
Well, this is a, this is a broader discussion that's kind of been brought on by several cases we've had recently, very similar to this. We've got another one next month on Malton Street. We had two, this will be the, this will be, I think, the fourth, B1 to B2 request that we've had in past.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. We had the Morningside and all those that we rejected, but I'm, from the applicant's perspective, how did they come to, do you know how she came to the point where she said, okay, it's not allowed in B2, so I want to try B1 or any other zoning?
She's B1 currently, she's asking for B2, and that's where this comes from. It's zone B1 and so, yes.
I'm misunderstood, thank you.
Is this the first one that's been on-premise, though? All the other ones have been off-premise alcohol sales.
The other ones that this was brought up were, they concerned, Paket's.
Right, so off-premise. And this one would be different because it would be on-premise.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll move to the next one. Ordinance 22-4514, approve rezoning request 139322 for Aspen Properties to rezone approximately two acres from an R2 Single Family Residential District to an R6 Single Family Semi-Attached Residential District and is located at 331 Austenville Road Southwest. Public hearing was set on May 2nd.
I guess this is the property on the corner of Austenville and Caradale. Old White House has been sitting there for, they were, they're looking to change this to Town Homes. This was written in the report about that.
All right, any questions? Ordinance 22-4515, approve rezoning request 139422 for Windchase Town Homes to rezone approximately .46 acres, more or less, from an R6 Single Family Semi-Attached Residential District to an R5 Single Family Patio Home Zero-Lifeline Residential District and is located north of 2847 Hempstead Avenue Southwest. Public hearing was set May 2nd, 2022.
I guess this is a neighborhood where they had a tennis court that was underutilized, and so they have opted to sell where those tennis courts are to a developer to continue the row of patio homes that is just the north of this property. If this is approved, will then be submitted a plan to divide this into three patio home homes.
All right, any questions? Ordinance 22-4516, approve rezoning request 139522 for Jason Parker's property, containing 3.04 acres, more or less, from a B1 Local Shopping District and an R1 Single Family Residential District to a B2 General Business District and is located at 3112 Highway 31 South. Public hearing was set May 2nd, 2022.
This one is, it's an existing business on the property looking to expand, but it was kind of, this is kind of a quirk of our zoning map where it's a really old piece of property that carries two different zonings, or B1 up by the front on 31 and R1 on the backside of the property. And the expansion of his, his new building he's wanting to build would have been on the R1 section, which we couldn't allow for a commercial use. And then in talking with him, it was decided that he would request B2. It's another weird little single B1 piece in the middle of a lot of other B2, so it made more sense for him to request B2, thinking, you know, long-term, if he wanted to do something else with the property. And it's more in fitting with the core.
All right, any questions? Is it near other residential?
No, it backs up to the Refuge, and so most of the Refuge, a large chunks of the Refuge are carrying an old R1 zoning, but their refuge properties are big. But this one is, yeah, like I said, it's just a really old piece of property that was probably consolidated a long time ago, and that zoning lot was just there.
All right, any questions? Resolutions, resolution 22-122, approve option and lease agreement between Decatur Utilities and Tillman Construction LLC.
We're going to have to tangle that until first meeting in July because they think the building needs to come to ready, and go through the process of evaluating that location.
So we can just, we can just remove that and sit on the.
All right, resolution 22-123, Blue Cross, Blue Shield Fitness Court. Alan?
Willie and Alan, Charles, take the lead.
This is a resolution to declare this company a sole-source vendor. You have the letter that they provided us in your packets. The main justification would be that they have a registered trademark for that package, basically.
Any questions for Charles?
It also, the resolution also, that it does have sole-source component to it. It also just allows us to move forward with putting the court at Wilson Morgan. After talking with Mr. DeMister, I think we've got funding source that can now come out of general funding and bring in some recreational funds, and so we're just asking, Charles, look at this resolution.
Do you know what timeframe it took to install it?
We've met with them, they're talking six, eight weeks to deliver. Once we get it approved, you know, we are responsible to get the pad in. Once we get the pad in, they will, you know, build the equipment, send it to us, so we're talking about six, eight weeks.
They build the equipment, send it to us, and we install it?
And they actually, this price includes them installing. The only thing we're responsible for is actually the pad, getting the pad in.
All right, any questions?
They also, I was hoping that I would get, and I think I'm, I don't think, I know that I'll get it before the meeting on the state. They're going to send us a rendering of what it'll look like, and they're going to go ahead and put a couple of the sponsors that we talked about. And there's still, there's still a possibility that's going to reach the council and have a couple of sponsor, sponsors.
Any questions?
Mildly is just with what else potentially go in there, making sure, but as long as we know kind of how it'll fit with the architect that we hired last year, making sure that they're aware of where it's at.
They're actually just about to go about that. This will be in front of the small calls bar right here to the east of the hamster.
All right, any other questions? Thanks, guys. Resolution 22-124, Princess Theater ADA Improvements, approve change number one, number two, and number three.
These are actually three change orders for the ADA improvements in the Princess. These are in that D-Duts.
We need more of those.
Well, I wanted to get, break these into the D-Duts before we brought the, we, I guess, just as information to the council and in talking with the architect. What they expect when we did this ADA improvements, one of the things that was on that Taryn's and Associates brought to us was the fact that there wasn't enough handicap accessibility for the different sections, mainly in the balcony area since it wasn't accessible. You know, if those, they have to add more seating prices to, you know, for that. I think in the conversations that they have had with the Princess, they really didn't like the design, and they're wanting to change that. My intentions are, I mean, that's a little outside of what, you know, what I was doing with ADA compliance, but my intent is for Caroline and I to meet with the architect of the Princess to see, you know, to get that, once we get there, bring that back to you all. But I don't know unless, I mean, I, I guess, Jason, like we, we can, partially we can. I mean, it's not like that we don't, I mean, we'll include you later, we need to, in that conversation, but it's actually a change from, I think, what they're presenting would be losing more seats than what we had intended, you know, what the plan is for us to, I mean, we're trying to reduce the loss as much as possible, but I think what she's wanting at this point would lose more seats than what we can lose. Just for y'all's information.
Any questions? All right, resolution 22-125, approve 2021-22 CAPER Solidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
This is a report that we have to submit yearly to HUD, and I just wanted to go ahead and sort of give you an overview of what's in this plan or what's in the report for the year. One of our major programs that we've done with CBG Funds for the last 15 years has been our first-time homebuyers assistance program. As you can see with that first slide or printout, we weren't able to do with 11 first-time homebuyers this year. We normally, 30 is what we try to do each year. I think part of it's just the availability of the housing stock. I just don't think housing stock is there. But the one thing that I always like to point out, and this is, it's not, it's, it happens every year, just how throughout the city, you'll see that, you know, in each district, it's pretty much evenly divided. I mean, we're, we're providing first-time home, first-time homebuyers throughout the city. It's not in any particular district, you know. There's, you know, District 2 had four, 1 had two, 3 had one, 4 and 5 both had two each. So it is pretty evenly divided throughout the city. The next big project, and we mentioned it earlier, with the Sykes Cemetery being adjacent to the Seville property. We have 20 lots at the Seville that we have built homes for, you know, residents of the Decatur. We have completed three with home, or 13. There's 13 that actually has homeowners in them. We have three that are under construction that are under contract. So that's a total of 16 out of 20. So we have four more lots that we'll be working on. So we have four more lots that we'll be working on. Our desire is, in talking with Community Action Agency, I think they have seen this fact, the value of this because they've partnered with us. They are really looking for property that they can buy and we can continue this somewhere else in the city. You know, houses in this price range are just, they're not, I mean, it's, so I absolutely believe that, so it's a market that we need to hit that we're just not hitting otherwise. We did, you know, we've also completed the first phase of the Austinville Park. We've got that completed. The trail is completed, lighting. We will be working to continue the other improvements that we talked about with the council over the past couple of weeks to finish that project. And the last thing is public service. And public service money is, we get 15% of our allocation from the block grant, which is somewhere around $450,000 to $500,000 a year. 15% of that can go toward public services. We do youth, Decatur Youth Services gets the majority of that, those funds for our youth activities. PACT does a caring car program where if there's someone in the community that needs reliable transportation to and from work, they will help them get the car repaired, put a set of tires on it, whatever may be needed on the car. Youth enrichment, I think we all know what Maxine Ellison has done for the, for the city of Decatur over the past 25 years, I guess. I know she, I know that's how, it's been 30 years, as long as I've been here, you know, she's run her after-school tutoring program and does great stuff. Mental Health Association, they do Project Reach program, which what they do with their funds is they take the clients who have dementia and provide economic supplies for dependents. They provide nutrition supplements. And if you've ever had anyone with dementia, you understand that those dietary are very expensive. So this allows them to purchase economic supplies for those. If you have anyone that you know of that could use that service, they, we definitely need to encourage them to give Mental Health Association a call. ACES does their after-school, are there summer youth programs coupled with different locations for at-risk youth. Commission on Aging does the nutrition program for the seniors at Turner's Earls. That continues to be a really good program. So we just thank all of our sub-precipitantes in front of those selfish monies that does a great service. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about that.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Resolution 22126, approve vendor price increase for new end-of-year fire truck.
Mr. Pike was in my office one day. We called the vendor, got a price increase for the truck. That's what we presented. And in the timeframe, when we got that phone call with that quoted price, they had went up $37,956.55 times approved. So we're asking for the council to increase that price that was pretty poor, this $37,956. They actually have another price increase scheduled for the day of the next council meeting, June of the 6th. So they've agreed not to give us that 4.5% price increase if it gets passed and I think it's back for it for next morning. So that's what this is.
All right, any questions?
I feel like this happens a lot. We agree to something, then we have a price increase. Was it not presented that if we approved it then we'd avoid one or did it just kind of?
We would avoid the June price increase and we just didn't realize it had done another since we got that quota taken. But this is the June that we talked about before.
And really, our approval on that was just hitting the mid-year budget.
Approved dollars too.
Yeah, but I don't know that we had actually gone and said we were going to purchase it.
No, it was fine.
Yep.
And if we had, if we had done it then when we was talking about that price, it would be good, but as everything goes up, I think this would be too pricey because the sixth day was in August, that was, that was this year sometime.
Yeah. Okay, any questions?
You want me to talk about a little bit about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I talked to Kyle today about this and I've got a couple of hours I need to get added to this. So Engine 2 is down and Engine 8, the truck, y'all approved them this to replace. It's got diesel and oil and they're having to tear the motor part to repair that. It's in the shop right now. And I don't even have a complete estimate of it, but it's, it's at $15,960 right now. And it's still got to look at this air dryer that's on it and they may have to replace that on top of what it is, but they can't check that until they get it running again. We have, we got two Rosenbowers that are reserve trucks, this trading truck and old Engine 5. So Engine 2, as you know, has been wrecked. They're on one of the reserve trucks. Engine 8 is down, it's on one of the reserve trucks. The train truck, it failed pump test and it overheated. So we tried to have a radiator flush and understand put in, but they didn't fix it. Since it's got to replace the radiator, that's $9,200 to do with the radiator on the truck. So.
Do you know when you'll have a full estimate on that?
I don't know when I'll have a full estimate. I should have it pretty soon. I don't think it's going to be a whole lot more than that. I don't think it's going to be a big jump for what this is.
So your question is, can we, if we do get those final, can we add it to this? And I'm behind that.
We might not have to if we're looking at the original budget. If they can support it, then they can just go right away and do it without having to wait. But if not, like I just, I mean, you got.
We just.
But I'm just saying if they do need to add it, but I don't have.
I'll have an answer tomorrow.
And old Engine 5, it got surplus back when Engine 5 had come on. And I found out today that we're going to have to un-circus that we never sold it, never got rid of it, still has it down there. But I'm going to put that on there to get that truck un-circus because we have the reserve trucks. We actually went down and didn't have any trucks at one time. Last week, a reserve truck, a lighter truck had a battery issue. So we had to rearrange how it was running stuff, but we did have a reserve truck when we went to, so it's actually, it looks like over there. So I'll have to get that, get that in too.
All right, any questions on those?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next, Resolution 22132, on thrones expenditures of $10,883,767 from American Rescue Plan State and Fiscal Recovery Funds.
I don't know if everyone has a printout of the actual resolution behind it, maybe not. That kind of gives you the guidelines to this resolution. So what this resolution will do is basically create our spending plan for the $10.8 million from the American Rescue Plan Act. It kind of falls into three categories. The first category is the lost revenues replacement, which we elected to use the $10 million standard allowance. So in that $10 million, you have three projects. First project is for $3.3 million for the widening of Modus Road. Second project is for $3.7 million for Highway 67 and Upper River Road intersection realignment. And the last project is for $3 million for Upper River Road and Indian Hills intersection realignment. The second kind of cost bucket is for expanding behavioral health services to the city's residents. And through help with the mayor, I guess we're jumping on board with the mental health center of North Central Alabama. The county made a contribution and this is our part, so that's for $600,000. I believe it's a crisis in the state also. There's a bunch of party involved with this, so that is eligible. And then the last piece is for two, just over $283,000. And this is Councilman Jackson and Dane went and did a ride and Dane shared with me some of the needs for Pine's Park. And that's eligible due to, you can see here, it says communities that are disproportionately impacted by the pandemic and projects that can include assistance and investments in eligible households and neighborhoods to promote health, improved health outcomes. That's basically the scheme of it all. If you have questions.
Well, I mean, so you're just, this is just a report generally where the.
Essentially what this will do is if approved, will allow us to spend these dollars on these projects.
That they can change.
Absolutely. As you'll see later on, we estimated Modus Road, we originally did this in that $3.3 million range and it's not going to be that. So you can see the ups and flows and how things change. And if this gets adjusted, obviously you can come to council for another review and hope. But at this time, this gives us the ability to use this money and start these projects.
All right, any questions? All right, thanks, Carl. Resolution 22127, Kierright McEnally, Modus Road improvements proposal, Lexington Avenue to Austin High School.
Carl. Mayor, council, this is for the engineering work provision wide on the Modus Road project in Lexington, out of the shade.
All right, any questions? All right, next, Resolution number 22128, amendment to CDG Engineering Deerfoot Estate drainage design.
Yeah, one of the property owners, the judge's property, who had to tell you of this project has come to be asked about relining the edge to an edge of the property, so somewhere down the river, the back of the building currently comes right to the middle of it. And I think to appease them and to help get an easement from them, I thought that was a good plan and for CDG to redesign the edge in that location, the re-rail topic for calculations, I think that would be a, if they used it for the judge, I think it's.
All right, any questions? Thanks, Carl. Resolution 22129, award bid number 22019 for Ready Mix Concrete to Ready Mix USA, being sole respondent.
Yes, this is one of our standing bids that expired, required bid, we have one in the house.
All right, any questions? All right, Resolution 22130, award bid number 22024 for sale A and sale 16, subgrade preparation to T and K construction in the amount of $2,032,138.
This bid was connected by Kierright, who we've got a representative here tonight, a T and K bid.
All right, any questions?
We think that's a good bid. That's a good, well, that'd be good.
All right, any other questions? All right, Resolution 22131, award bid number 22025 for Sand to Fine Aggregates to Alliance Sand, being the sole respondent.
Yes, sir. Another standing bid, required bid, and I have one response.
I think that is true. When the concrete is really not being supplied most by, the sand, I guess, is probably a holdup. It could be the types of sand we have to head up various, you know, purposes, of course, taking probably not just a truck.
All right, any other questions? Charles, Resolution 22133, approve algo video sharing agreement.
That's something the mayor has, basically, there's cameras that, that's certainly one of them will do the improvements of, put up cameras, will be able to share, control the citizens to be able to see traffic flow. It will not be controlling speed, it's only to see what the traffic is.
It's not adding any intersection. It's most like what you see now on the algo app, where there's just be space throughout Highway 30, 26th Avenue, anticipating in late spring, summer of '23, some rehabilitation to take place on the 65 River Bridges with that traffic will be, some traffic will be routed onto Sixth Avenue. Plan is to take down traffic signals at Prospect, Jackson, and Johnston to have the traffic flow and of course to hold off on doing the Sixth Avenue corridor improvement project until that works.
So the video there, it allows them to adjust lights?
It helps them to, yes, to do some manual, if they have need.
It's hard to get it stacked up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is it going to be recorded or is it just, you say, just stay live?
Man, I can't recall.
But it's through, is it through Algo? All right, any other questions?
I think it's just a live.
Just live?
I want to say I heard that algo don't record anything.
It's an app. You can go look at cameras right now.
Yeah.
See all that.
Just if it records.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Resolution 22134, purchase of a Kubota tractor for Parks and Recreation.
We had a tractor break down a couple of months ago. It was a John Deere tractor that we pulled a, a shop apart from that. They've looked at it and repaired it and was told it's not, they can't get it repaired. So one of the things that happened after budget, which we had asked for an excavator, they said, "Wait a minute." As soon as we asked for that excavator and got approved, they went up $37,000 and they made the timeframe six months on. So I talked about what I think that there's $1,000 because that's not a great deal. Of course, it's not a fire truck either, so we don't, it's a different. The, so what we've done is we still have the money for that excavator. So all we're going to do is take that money and use that on the tractor. So you've learned to actually approve the money, it's just going to.
All right, any questions? How's the excavator?
It's clean somewhere. I think it's not the case.
Any other questions? All right, Resolution 22135, approve the mayor to accept an agreement with Virtual Rail Fan for the installation and streaming of webcams at the train depot.
Virtual Rail Fan is a website that has hundreds of different sites that have railroads where they can watch trains go by stations. Decatur happens to have the, one of the best ones. We have what they call a double hotspot, which Judge Braylon is really much better than I am as far as telling me what that is. We have a great place. We have people come from all over the country to come see this. This is an opportunity for us to be able to take that opportunity and use it to, because, you know, we can do things like, you know, put something behind Turner's Earls that's in my side as far as what we're doing for vans and things like that. But it's just something that we would put on the side of the building there, the train depot, and it would be something that people would watch the train station.
All right, any questions? All right, Resolution 22136, approve the replacement of the primary air handler unit at City Hall.
As many of y'all are aware, the humidity that's been in the building lately is not something that we have as a goal. So Kurt, through checking and getting with the contractors and the folks that know what they found out that there is, well, the air handlers is going to have to be changed out. I've actually asked Kurt to be here tonight, because during the conversation, that will get us through. get us through, we know the air handler that is there now is not going to work for much This will get that one replaced. We won't have it until December, that's as quick as we can get. So part of the conversation also is, is with the age of these components, we're going to be looking at probably yearly coming back over the next few years and replacing different units. And Kurt has much more specific information.
There's a total of five basement units that take care of City Hall here and all of them had to install in ninety-seven. So all these units are twenty-five year old. And the problem, the issue with this unit was it had multiple wire holes developed in the steam hole. So looking at the age of the unit, the cost of replacement of the coals, that's one we're trying to start replacing.
We'll get there and put on the, the place that needs to go with the rotation that needs to go in. We'll do that.
Council, the sole source justification on this one should be removed. It's actually covered under a national cooperative.
Okay. All right, any questions? All right, resolution twenty-two, one thirty-seven, approve the purchase of temporary fencing for parks and recreation.
This is the fencing that goes in the outfield at the Boston Morgan Field. One thing I did want to mention with this is C V B really stepped up a couple of years ago and helped us with some fencing over there, but it was plastic fencing and that, and that's what we can do with that and it worked great for a couple of years. Put plastic in the sun for that long and it tends to get a little brittle. This is not, this is well fixed in the worst way. It's also the one day whatever we put it, it's, it's, so we're asking if this goes right. Just, just because the other stuff, as we're taking it out now, it's going to be alright.
All right, any questions? All right, thanks, Jason. Resolution twenty-two, one thirty-eight, declare sole source supplier for the purchase of police vehicles.
COVID chip shortage is not a cause of true business problems again, the ability to buy police pursuit vehicles nationwide. As a matter of fact, you can't order anything in the state of Alabama right now under statement and no vehicle orders being taken by anybody until August or April delivery. Out of desperation, I did a Google search and found a company called Data Supply, which has thirty offices nationwide. They claim to be selling police cars and I sent them an email saying, well, I need some police cars. And was made contact from a seller up in Alabaster and was looking for eight units in the amount of money that we had in the budget for the rest of this year. And he was able to find these vehicles in Texas. There are no other cars available anywhere that you want to pay a complete retail price, which is about nine thousand dollars a unit for these cars for. I can't find any other cars of any brand anywhere that are metal right now. And we need those cars to get our feedback out to people that we're hiring, issues we're having, so to borrow. So I asked for the sole source for this because there is nothing else.
And when, when the market stabilizes, we'll actually go back to doing our own bids and hopefully get the openers. It's just a dire situation.
Yeah, and there was some discussion about if we have time to wait till next week to order, you know, that we can get these if we can work it Monday.
I can, if it's approved Monday, we can get those cars. Right now is a right now. There are other agencies trying to buy cars, of course, but we're like the same old three yards.
Was he the same one? I think there's eleven additional vehicles.
Yes, the possibility that was able to, we were able to do this. I acquired, I acquired getting more vehicles on top of the bank to try to save money next year, plus the availability next year. We don't know what we're going to be able to get. And he said, we're not going to be concerned.
We're recently down, what, thirteen?
Thirteen cars.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Kyle, you've been very spacious on this. Thank you.
Take care of the troops. Thank you.
Ordinance is first reading, ordinance number twenty-two, four, five, one, nine, approve amendment to the Code of Decatur, Alabama, Article eleven, Chapter seven, Property Maintenance Code.
David Lee is our expert.
All right.
Thanks, sir. Just be creative. I'm going to be quick. This is just going to add in a provision back into the property maintenance code with this, get out this revision option deals with the public facilities. And then the other component will just allow us to utilize a different appeals board for the same buildings rather than try to keep the community preservation board fully staffed, which has always been difficult to do. And actually we've got, we've got some very qualified people on the construction page board that keeps us happy. We're going to.
He just always looks like that. Any questions, David? Can you go back on the demo we had, I think it was the public hearing on front page, the thirteen oh eight fifteenth Avenue?
I can. That's one, and we'll get some stuff to you at the next work session before the public here. That's just one that we've been rounding around on that one. Can't seem to get any forward movement and given the fact that you continue to, I know, get complaints, that's the doctrine.
All right, any questions on that one? Thank you, sir. Next is ordinance twenty-two, four, five, two, zero, approve amendment to the Code of Decatur, Alabama, Article one, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen dash four, paperless filing and payments.
This is on the tax side for an Alabama taxes. Right now, minimum of seventy, people are asking to change to two hundred to try to persuade more people to file for an Alabama taxes. It's more effective.
So if they owe over two, over two hundred?
If they owe over two hundred, they'll apply for five for an Alabama taxes.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thanks, Lori. Boards and committees, mayoral appointment of Jerry Baker to the Housing Authority Board, term expiring August fifth, twenty twenty-three. And I don't think we've voted on that, but mayor, any comments on having Jerry Baker get canned? Any questions? All right, reappoint Brian Cook to second term on D D R A board, term expiring June twenty-first, twenty twenty-eighth. Second term, any questions? All right, anything from any other directors?
I forgot to mention on that air handler, it's not in the resolution, but the funding source would be heritage. I think it's in there, rights on the side, but I'll make that change for the actual vote.
All right, let's call any other directors. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right, council, anything else? All right, we're adjourned, thank you.